Hello, I'm Van Rogerson, interim president, CEO of NCE East Alliance. I'd like to welcome you to our eighth webinar work session. This is a pretty exciting one for us. We've got a diverse group in the audience today about a very important subject on 87. We've got friends in Hampton Roads, federal legislative reps, state legislators, county, county officials. I'm kind of just running down RPO, MPO members. I mean, a lot of significant partners. I can't go through all of them, but we appreciate all of you being there. We think this is certainly one of our bigger sessions to date. You know, when we got the results from the DOT when we got the results back from this DOT freight logistics study, and we also had surveyed our allies, all of this convinced our NCE's board that there was a lot of regional projects that needed an advocate. As Dr. Van Scott on our board said, suggested that we become a convener of stakeholders. And, you know, in that role, you you discuss important issues. You're a convener to push critical issues and to assist our regional partners. So we're developing a group of stakeholders, sponsors and partners who care about the region, who want to lend a hand, who want to improve the region. There are many issues that we need to deal with, and we need your voice, your idea and your connections. And let's make a difference together. So let's get started on on this first one. I want you to just thank the partners that we have on this in this session. We focused on North Carolina portion of the corridor today. We struggled with how long this session should be, how interactive it should be. You know, obviously, we've got strong partners we need to involve across the Virginia line. But in the interest of time, we thought we'd do a lot of history, bringing up where we are. And there are a few immediate things that we feel like we need to to do. So I just want to give a quick thank you to our our partners, our sponsors. You know, they are our regional advocacy partners so far. Trey, so you know, at our platinum level, ECU, Keith Wheeler, Dr. Van Scott, Vada, Mike Waldrum, certainly two of our key board members. Integrated Financial Holden Eric provides us space for our incubator and office in Greenville Bull and Company. Aaron Bull, I'm certainly working with on our website and social media stuff. Our goal sponsors, Brenda and Carl Reese with Electric Cities, Martin Johnson, Elizabeth from Beaufort County, Dominion, Brian Smith, Silver sponsors, Evolve Wheel. We appreciate all you have done and are doing with us as well. Martin Marietta, Buzz, we appreciate your partnership, Port of Virginia, Aaron, Cara, Russ, thank you for that. Nutrien Ray McKeith and Martin County, Jason Simple, and then and Kilpatrick Townsend, one of our attorney partners. As far as single events, Rocky Mount Meals, Evan, we appreciate your support. Duke, Millie and Donna, a couple of the people we've we've got others that we're chatting with. We just we just need your participation and vision on how we should move forward. So I'm going to stop for a second. Trey Goodson is going to give you just a couple of Zoom rules of the for the work session, and then we'll get started.
Thank you, Van. We're in a bit of a different setting today. We're usually in the webinar setting, and today we're in a Zoom meeting setting where everybody can see each other, and we can talk at appropriate times, but we do ask that you maintain or remain muted throughout the entire meeting today. Just avoid any background noise throughout the presentations. If you do have a question during the meeting today, you can use the chat box where you can click it, type your question and submit it, and the speaker may answer your question at that time. But we will have a Q and A session at the end of today's meeting where we address all questions. And we do ask to use this reactions tab on the right at the bottom. Click it, then click raise hand. We'll call on your name. You can unmute yourself, and then you can ask your question. And to unmute yourself, you'll just go over to that microphone over on the bottom left. Click it to unmute yourself, click it again to mute yourself. And if you'd like to check your microphone settings, you can click that arrow over on the right and make sure everything's working correctly. If at any point during today's meeting you need to check your video settings, you can click this video camera icon on the left. You can also click it to turn your video on and off, and you can click the arrow to check the settings. If you need to enter and exit full screen mode at any point during today's meeting, you can click the two arrows in the top right to do so as needed. I believe that does cover everything, Van, so I'm going to turn it back over to you to cover the.
Thank you. So this is a quick overview of what we hope to accomplish today. We thought it was important to go back to the beginning. Joe Malazo was really the spark for us in the true Northeast back in the 2004 or 5 timeframe. Joe's the guy came along and said he was working on a corridor up in Raleigh Research Triangle, and that the entire corridor all the way up to Virginia would be important for him and for us. So we kind of jumped on board with that, and and every time I talk with Joe, he's always showing his continued support for us with the corridor. So we thought we'd just start with a quick little history of where we came up to now. And Joe, I'll throw it over to you. Thanks for joining us just for a few comments here.
Man, happy to do it. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
That sounds good. Well, thank you, Van, and the NCE East Alliance for organizing this great event and with so many partners and for the opportunity to speak with each of you this morning. As Van said, I'm Joe Malazo. I'm the executive director of the RTA Business Coalition in Raleigh. We're called the Regional Transportation Alliance, voice of the regional business community in the Greater Research Triangle area. We were founded back in 2002. We're a regional program of the Raleigh Chamber. We serve more than 100 member companies, companies like Duke Energy, Martin Marietta, NC State, NC Railroad, many others, and more than 25 chambers of commerce, including all of them, not just our Wake County Chambers, but Rocky Mount, Goldsboro and beyond. Our website is let'sgetmoving.org if you're interested in more than that. While I've been a resident of North Carolina for what is now the majority of my life, I was born and raised in a small community in southwest PA about the size of Windsor. I've been with RTA since our inception in 2002 after some school at Penn State and NC State and a few positions as a traffic engineer and researcher. I say that because I can tell you firsthand from both my youth in rural Appalachia, Pennsylvania, and from our success with RTA and the triangle and projects like 4540 of both the challenges of inadequate transportation infrastructure and a little bit about what it takes to overcome them. And the main word there would be resilience probably of all. RTA's mission is to deliver business leadership to get our region moving faster. As Van mentioned, we have been pushing for the acceleration of the I-87 corridor and its predecessor root numbers for more than 15 years. Little bit of history, RTA organization actually requested an interstate designation from Williamson over to Raleigh via a letter to DOT back, and I think it was 2005. That request was denied at the time, but we kept lobbying and we kept looking for a positive opportunity for movement. By 2012, DOT did make a request to ASHTO, that's American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials, for the addition of for the addition to the quarter of the Interstate Highway System I-44 for that designation. Now, some of y'all may recall I-495, not the Washington DC Beltway, but the temporary interstate designation along 64 and Wake County. We successfully lobbied to get that original 495 approval between Raleigh and Rocky Mount. Former Governor Cory actually announced that at our RTA annual meeting on December 12, 2013, just to give you a sense of it. I spoke at the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organizations up in Chesapeake, Virginia, multiple times in October 2014 to try to gain support for what became I-87. In that fall, their chamber, their business roundtable and their transportation planning group all endorsed the initiative, which was good, and it was formally designated as a future interstate with congressional legislation passing in December 2015. RTA requested the DOT make the application for the root number, and we suggested an odd number to highlight the north-south two-state partnership. We and DOT went for I-89, DOT received approval for I-87 in April 2016. Ultimately, we did not care what number they picked. We just wanted a nice two-digit number on a red, white and blue shield. And so we're excited about that. In May 2016, Ariel News in Raleigh had a story on 87, I-87. And in June 2016, it was the cover story on the Virginian Pilot Newspaper up in Hampton Roads. I had the opportunity to extol the virtues and bipartisan, bicameral and by state, by state support for I-87. The headline, what a trip, Interstate Highway Proposed to Lake Norfolk and Raleigh. If you're going to hear more about the feasibility study, that just was completed a year or two ago. We'll talk about that. One thing I will mention is RTA did formally request the DOT post the designation of I-87, not future I-87, but I-87 itself along much of the 64 corridor in Eastern Wake County, since that was built to full interstate. Those signs and numbers have been posted on the first 13 miles. Those begin with the terminus in I-40. A little bit about the why. In addition to providing new interstate for Raleigh and for Eastern Wake, our belief is that those I-87 signs would provide not just navigation, but momentum for the quarter. And we were pushing further on it. Last year, we signed a letter with Brian Stevens with the Hampton Roads Chamber for a DOT initiative to try to help fund portions of it. It's called I-95 Future I-87 Rural Corridor Resilience Innovative Technology will continue to be supported. It's important, I-87 is important to Raleigh and Wake County. It's Wake County's first north-south interstate. It's our second primary interstate after I-40 to eventually serve as our first and only direct interstate connection, I-95 North at Rocky Mount. It also serves as our linkage in northeastern North Carolina, including communities like Tarboro, Williamson, Windsor, Badenton, Hartford, Lisbon City, and it connects the Research Triangle with coastal Virginia's Hampton Roads Metro, including the port without requiring any travel on I-95. I've always mentioned a future interstate will provide an economic lifeline for the Northeast by linking key metro suburban rural job centers while providing several counties their first direct access to the interstate system. Makes it easier economic development. Van and others know when you're looking for a place to locate or expand, they want to know if it has interstate access. We will have counties that will get that, and we're excited about that. So looking ahead, we know I-87 is really important to the future of the 252, the 757 and the and the 919, to use the area code monikers we sometimes refer to. We know that, or we wouldn't be here today, and we wouldn't have this many people on this call that NCE has put together. We believe that the I-87 designation provides hope and promise, and hopefully it provides focus for our collective efforts to bring this to fruition. I've been a lobbyist on transportation for nearly 20 years. I've been working on freeways, intersections, transit, air service and related economic development. It is crystal clear to me and to all of us that I-87 is going to take a while to complete. But I do think if we focus on little wins while keeping the overall goal in mind and work together, we will get there. If we don't work together, it will take longer. So the question for that would be, how hard do we want to make this? Transportation is always going to be challenging. Let's make it as as easy as we can. And frankly, Van, as I put my remarks back to you, and I guess the Dana is an extra DOT, I'd say I would like professionally, and I would, and our organization is committed to supporting the I-87 initiative from the triangle here. And I would like for all of us to be able to say we gave I-87 to our children rather than only to our grandchildren. So our websites, let's get moving, and let's do that, and I'll turn it directly over to Dana.
Joe, thanks for those comments and and background, and I'm going to jump here and share a screen real quick, and we'll we'll get moving. Thank you for having us today. All right, bear with me real quick. All right. Thanks, everybody, for your patience on the technology side. Here's what we'll do today. We'll talk a little bit about the corridor overview, and I'll introduce some spots, some of our strategic prioritization office resources that we'll be able to provide for you today. The corridor runs from west to east across four NC DOT divisions, and we'll have an update from division staff in each of those divisions today. And then we'll leave you with some information to go on our logistics and freight profile. We won't spend much time on that, but I love that we're having this conversation, you know, hearing from Van and NCE East Alliance that this is the first of many. And I think Joe puts that in perspective as this will be a long-term process, but one that is done better together. I think I'm stealing Coca-Cola's line on that one. So starting with the corridor, historically, interstates have reduced travel time by more than 30% since 1960. They lower overall transportation costs for industry and improve supply chain predictability. The interstate also enables workers to choose from a wide array of employment opportunities. Earnings rise both commercially and personal earnings and increased market access that comes with that interstate. Hold on, you guys are all looking at my notes, huh? Hey, Trey, what screen do you have? Does it say corridor overview?
Yeah, I see the corridor overview now.
God bless Zoom. Bear with me. So there's a lot of benefits to to an interstate corridor. And as Joe mentioned, a long process, but one that's already in place. And to start off with, the biggest hurdle is getting that future designation. And now that it's on the docket and it's ready to be organized around, I think that that's really the right move. So we'll continue to jump into the corridor. As you see, we've got it outlined, the preferred route here. And in fact, I think this was a WRL graphic as they started to publicize this story. And connecting those metro markets between Raleigh and Norfolk are vital to both economies, really. We'll leave you with some resources from our strategic prioritization office, the process through which projects are proposed from a local and division level, and then approved and planned and funded. Jason Scrants from the Spot Office is on the call. We'll have a chance, if you have some questions later for him. But his office has put together an outline of the full map across all four divisions, one that will leave that with you with information. And then a full catalog of all of the P prioritization 6.0, that's the phase we're on, projects involving this I-87 and future I-87 corridor broken down by division. So that's a great resource you'll take and really can help organize the the conversation and effort. To start off with, I want to turn it over to Craig Majet from our Division One staff at the easternmost point on the I-87 corridor, and Craig will give us an update on the projects in his division. Craig?
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. As Dana said, I am Craig Midget. I am the Division Planning Engineer for Division One. We are the easternmost division, northeastern division in the DOT. Let me just begin with saying that on the previous slide from the P6 projects, which are the projects that have been submitted for scoring, we have 14 that are on the AI-87 corridor. And I'm not going to read all of those, but if any of you should have any questions, my contact information is on the the last slide of our presentation. Please don't hesitate to reach out to me. And either I can address any questions or concerns or get you in contact with somebody who can. With that said, I'd like to go ahead and touch base, just sort of go over the projects that we have that are currently in the step. The first four are fully funded, and they are tentatively scheduled to begin in 2025. I say tentatively because things being what they are, they they things are a little fluid, but we anticipate them to begin in 2025. We are starting in Chauvin County at the Bertie County line and moving through the entirety of the county on the the future I-87 corridor, meaning running into Proquemans County, which is the adjoining county. The project manager for both of these is Barry Hobbs. And if you need to reach out to him, his contact information is shown on these pieces of information. Next slide, please. Moving on, we have the project that touches the Virginia state line in Camden County that is also a project that is being managed by Barry Hobbs. Again, anticipated construction is 2025, and we are hoping for that scheduled to hold. The county that runs into Camden County and is between Proquemans and Camden is Pasquotane County. It has been funded with Garvey bonds, and it is currently been let. And the project manager for it is, who is now the district engineer, David Ots, and his contact information is there should you need to reach out to him. We were hoping construction would have began this past year, but it has been placed on a hold. Next slide, please. The the following projects have been partially funded. They are in step, though. This first one is in Hartford, in Proquemans County, and it has been programmed for planning and environmental. And unfortunately, right now, it is on hold, and we are waiting to hear for a a move forward for the P and E for that project. The next two projects have are in Hartford as well. Hartford's in Proquemans County. And both of these have been resubmitted, and they are in the P6 process right now. We will have further information on those as P6 is completed, and we have the scoring for those, and it goes through the local input process. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Dana. Thank you.
All right, Craig, thank you very much. And getting out of Division One here, and we'll make sure that you have all of these slides so that you can take those with you as needed. Up next, we'll hear from Division Two and Len White. Len, if you'll unmute and you want to jump in on Division Two.
All right. Thank you, Dana. Again, my name is Len White. I'm the Division Two Planning Engineer. Our main office is in Greenville. Our division office is in Kinston. So my my part will be kind of short and sweet. What we've got going on right now is a project, there's two of them underway to do the work between Wilson County and over to Pitt. We're going on at the same time. They were both led at the same time back in about the fall of 2019, and we're anticipating being finished sometime this spring of '21. It's been a widen, strengthen, reservice and get it up to interstate standard. Use interstate maintenance funds. It was awarded to ST Wooton. And again, it's in the mid, low to mid 90s in the percentage complete. Like I said, it's short and sweet. If you've got any questions or anything, just put them in the chat box, and we'll be happy to get anything back to you.
Len, thank you for that update. Up next, we're going to move to Kristen Barnes from Division Four, Division Four, excuse me.
Good morning. I hope everyone can hear me all right.
You're good.
Um, thanks for having us. We look forward to working with this group in any way that's needed going forward, and you're able to put some names with faces for sure, which can be helpful. I have on the screen a list of IM projects, which are our interstate maintenance projects. And the main thing with these for all of the divisions is that the fact that these routes are designated as interstates now allows us to tap into a different funding source for pavement rehab and any upgrades that are needed on the corridor. So that's great for the division and the department to tap into those federal dollars to be able to make these improvements. And through that, we're making some additions that will help the corridor become more up to standards as far as an interstate is concerned. So here listed the ones that we have going through our division. And Division Four, we run from Nash County through Edgecombe County. So that's the portion of this route that's covered. So you see, we have a handful of projects actually letting in 2025. The A projects are bridge rehab, and the just the regular numbers are what the asphalt or pavement repairs are. So you see, we're doing some shoulder widening, guardrail upgrades, and most importantly, the pavement rehab. You can go to the next slide. And then we have one step project that's funded in 2029, and a portion of the right-of-way and a portion of utilities is funded in that year. So obviously, this project will have to go through re-prioritization in the next spot process. But, you know, it was submitted and funded partially, partially in 2029. So throughout our whole division, each portion of this corridor has been submitted as a project in the spot process. So, you know, we support the project and our own board to help the MPOs and RPOs as much as we can push the projects along. So if you have any questions specifically to our division, I'll be happy to answer any of those. And I have, I didn't mention, but I'm the deputy division engineer for Division Four. And Jimmy Eaton, I believe, is on the call, who is our planning engineer. So he's available too to answer any questions.
Kristen, thank you. And up next, we'll get on the far western part of the corridor. We'll turn over to David Keelson for an update on Division Five. Go ahead and unmute yourself there, David.
Sorry, guess that would help if I unmuted myself.
You're good.
David Keelson here, Division Planning Engineer for Division Five at the western end of the corridor, and have a number of projects, some which are funded and committed, others funded but not committed, and also projects submitted in the most recent round of prioritization. So first one is I-6005. This is a widening project. This is from US 64 Business out to the split with US 264. It will widen to six lanes. Current schedule is for right-of-way in fiscal year '28 and construction approximately 2030. This is a committed project. And the next one, I-6007, is an interchange improvement project. The congested interchange there, pretty high volumes, getting on and off at Smithfield Road. And I don't know that we have a final alternative selected, but at least at this point envisioned to be a diverging diamond interchange. And similar schedule to the other fiscal year '28 for right-of-way construction year after that. And then a STI project, which is funded but not committed, is U-6101. This is for a managed freeway. And just to explain a little bit about that, that includes a sophisticated form of ramp metering, coordinated and adaptive ramp metering. We've seen some benefits from a more basic form of ramp metering, which we currently have on a section of I-4, I-540 on the north side of Raleigh. But with this more sophisticated type, larger benefits are anticipated. And it's it's particularly effective where you have a lot of congestion. And the project actually covers some other corridors within Division Five as well on I-40, 440 and US 1. And so I just wanted to mention that this this project is not committed, so it has to recompete for funding in P6.0. Currently scheduled for right-of-way in '29 and construction about 2031. Then moving on to interstate maintenance projects, we have two interstate maintenance projects on this corridor within Division Five, I-6001 and I-5944. And these basically And these basically are on, from I-440 out to Nash County. It's pavement rehabilitation and you know, schedules are pretty much all subject to change. But currently looking at fiscal year '25 for that. Then we also have a project which was submitted in P 6.0 for widening close to the Raleigh area. This is from 440 out to US-64 Business. So this is the section to the west of the section that's already funded, which was the I-6005. So we're hoping that will score well and provide some additional improvements. So that's all I have and thank you very much.
David, thank you for that. You know, it's great to hear across the whole corridor that so much is in process and so much is being addressed. And, and I think Joe hit it right on the head too. There are some sort of near-term wins and some longer-term projects that have to be realized. So thank you to all of our folks from Division One, Two, Four, and Five for this update. We'll leave this presentation with you and the logistics profile that follows in the appendix. And I'm available to answer any questions on that. But now we'll turn it over to Mark Finlayson from the Highway 1764 Corridor. And Mark's a veteran of these kinds of efforts and look forward to hearing his wisdom. Mark?
Dana, thank you a lot. And thanks to Van for including our association in this conversation today because we have been interested in this for a long, long time. I'll take a few minutes to give you a brief history of our organization and kind of bring it up to current time. And some of the things that we're dealing with that are going to impact the way that we fund and ultimately build I-87. Our organization began as the Highway 17 Association all the way back in 1975. In the year 2006, our Board of Directors reorganized and repurposed what we were doing. The leadership at the time said, look, we're, we're either going to have to get intentional and proactive about our advocacy for our corridor, or we might as well disband. Well, nobody wanted to disband because the improvement of US-17 was too important. And our goal then, as now, was to improve US-17 to the highest possible facility standards. Interstate standards are the highest you can get. There are other, there are other standards, freeway, expressway, so forth, that you can calculate. But what we were dealing with at the time was that we still had miles and miles of two-lane road, which not only was not helpful for mobility, but was also incredibly dangerous. So we had to at least get the two-lane segments of US-17 up to four lanes. And we're still, of course, dealing with that. About five years ago, with the passage of the Federal FAST Act, we added US-64 communities and counties to our organization. Because through the work of our congressional delegation and advocates like Joe Malazo, Federal Highway Administration and Congress designated the I-87 corridor as a future interstate. And so it was important for us to make sure that we looked at not only the US-17 part of future I-87, but the US-64 part too, because the entire corridor is extremely important and we need to look at it holistically as a region. And so we were gratified with the support we got at that time from Nash and Edgecombe Counties, Rocky Mount, Tarboro, and other stakeholders along the 64 part of the interstate corridor. Obviously, interstate standards, the highest quality standard we can aspire to. We very much want to see this project undertaken in a meaningful way and completed as soon as possible. We can talk about this later, but our association has had a standing subcommittee within NC DOT for years and years that includes not only our Board of Transportation members for the appropriate highway divisions, but the division engineers and Raleigh staff dealing with construction, pre-construction, funding, and so forth. We have found that over the years to be an incredibly valuable way to sit down, compare notes, solve problems. And I'd like to think that that standing subcommittee can continue to work with I-87 as a part of that conversation. And once we get past COVID, I'd like to think that those committee meetings will be reinstated once the Board of Transportation begins to meet again. So we'll look for that. As you heard the excellent reports from our friends at DOT, you saw that most of the work that we expect to be done has been pushed off at least several years, and in some cases to the back end of the 10-year step. That's not an accident, as, as all of us know, and I think realistically, we have to acknowledge. There have been some financial challenges that have been posed to NC DOT. Really going all the way back to Hurricane Matthew and then on top of Matthew, Hurricane Florence. There were hundreds of millions of dollars in storm remediation repairs that DOT had to take on well beyond the money they had set aside to, to manage that. Then on top of that, the department lost what we call the MAP Act suit in court. MAP Act had been the way that NC DOT could encumber right-of-way for future projects. But with the result of that lawsuit loss, DOT then had to either acquire right-of-way immediately that they had hoped to push out for several years or release the property from further encumbrance. So that was another problem that they've had to deal with. And then on top of that, we had COVID and people stopped driving to the extent they had before. And therefore, gas tax revenues dramatically decreased. So it's been a really unfortunate series of events that has caused DOT to have some financial difficulties. However, the good news is that as things improve, I'm confident that DOT will move projects back to the left on the timeline to the fullest extent that they can. And they're also creatively using Build NC Bonds for some of these projects that are sort of outside of the constraints put on the normal NC DOT budget. So I appreciate the fact that DOT is doing really as good a job as they could possibly do to manage these unfortunate financial events. And we intend to be very supportive of whatever they're doing and however we can help. To that end, one of my roles, in addition to being the Director of Highway 1764 Association, is that I chair the Board of Directors of NC GO, which is the statewide transportation advocacy coalition. NC GO has been around since 2002 and has pushed ever since that time for long-term sustainable funding for NC DOT, really for the state of North Carolina in order for our state to build a 21st century transportation system to support the population that we expect and to support the kind of economy that requires a dynamic transportation system to move goods and services quickly and safely. The gas taxes, I'm sure you know, is not a sustainable income source for NC DOT. Internal combustion engine cars are getting way better gas mileage than they used to. Therefore, they're buying fewer gallons of gas. And more than that, the electrification of our automobile and truck fleets is moving very much faster than we had anticipated 10 years ago. So electrification is one of the technologies that is disrupting transportation, the way we use it and the way we'll have to pay for it. Autonomous vehicles are part of that calculation. Ride sharing, ride hailing is part of that calculation. And it's impacting all three of the revenue streams that DOT uses. The gasoline tax or motor fuels tax, the highway use tax, which is the sales tax on cars and trucks, and DMV fees that we pay for license tags and your driver's licenses. Population growth anticipated in North Carolina is outpacing our ability to, to manage the transportation system. We expect to be the seventh largest state in the country by 2040. We'll have 12 and a half million people by that time. There, our current transportation system isn't even adequate to meet current demands. And it's certainly inadequate to meet future demands with that kind of population, that kind of miles traveled on the system. So we have to think about the future and what that means. NC GO has been very supportive for the last couple of years of an initiative undertaken by NC DOT in the state called the NC First Commission. They concluded their work last Friday and turned in their recommendations to the Board of Transportation. I think maybe they're even meeting with the Long-Term Transportation Funding Committee, maybe even today at the General Assembly to roll out some of those recommendations. But what that commission did, which we're very supportive of, is look at the future of transportation and meaningful, long-term, sustainable funding options that we can consider. And I won't get into all of those, but today, we can do that at a later time. But I commend the report to you. And I think we all need to be thinking about how we change, how we finance transportation. Because the more we become a 21st century system and department, then the faster we get some of these projects built. And one of the things that I think Van will talk about a little bit later, and I think will be addressed in the Q and A, is the fact that I-87, while it's important on its own, is part of a multimodal transportation system for all of eastern North Carolina, whereby we move freight, we move people, we move all the things that we manufacture here and ship out and the things that we need here that are manufactured elsewhere. We need to think about it as a region in terms of highway, rail, barge, ports, aviation. All these things are part of a regional approach that we need to embrace. So in my role as Chairman of Board of NC GO, we're urging our policymakers to take a look at this future state of transportation in North Carolina and make the necessary changes to, to get things going. And we will benefit as a region and as a project, I-87, from that effort, I think. And before I pitch it back to Van, I just want to remind everybody how important this effort is and how gratified I am to see so many people on the call. I-87 is obviously going to improve safety for the people of eastern North Carolina that will drive on it. It's going to improve mobility. We'll be able to get from place to place faster. We'll be able to get from our homes to our jobs, from our homes to our healthcare, from our homes to leisure faster and more safely. And all of that, at the end of the day, creates economic opportunity and improves our quality of life. And that's, those three things, safety, mobility, and economic opportunity are why we're all here today and why this effort's so important. Thanks to my friend Joe Malazo. Thanks to Dana and the team from NC DOT for all the great work they do. And thanks to my friend Van Rogerson, who put this together today. And I'm going to pitch it to Van at this point. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you, team. Certainly, we've got a lot of information. We will be sharing a lot of this information. Trey will be sending it out afterwards. And even the report last Friday, we'll try to attach that as well. Mark, since you, you actually sent that to us real time when it was first coming out as well. You know, I've, I've been involved with economic development in rural northeastern North Carolina a long time. And one of the things, back in 2000, and all of you that are in economic development, when the state was promoting this North Carolina and they were promoting the road system, they showed the interstate corridors for promoting North Carolina. It looked like we did not even have a road that was coming up through northeastern North Carolina because we did not have an interstate. So that was one of, that was one of many things that really caught fire with all of our collective group. When Joe first came through and we were talking about an interstate, and over the years, there had been a lot of routes discussed with the interstate to get up to Norfolk. But when you start considering going from the port to our first, to our military base that's in Elizabeth City, that certainly seems important. There are, there are a ton of different opportunities that are here. And, and when I first got to know Dana, Magliano with DOT Logistics, they, you know, DOT was just having their freight logistics study for the east and northeast. It was just coming out. And, and like you said, Mark, when you, when you look at that study, I-87 is a huge deal on our future and freight mobility and that sort of thing. Rail is a big one. I think everybody's heard of the CSX Intermodal. It's up the corridor. It's rail connecting to both of our ports. I think both of our ports are on, both the Virginia Port and North Carolina Ports are on this call. Huge partners in, in all of this type of stuff. And then there's I-87. So when you talk barge rail and then the interstate road system, there are a lot of things that we have never explored, or we did not when the Northeast Partnership was there. You know, things like barge facilities up the waterways in the northeast for containerization. I'm just pulling one out of the hat that Keith Wheeler has mentioned with ECU is, has anybody done a study to see if the containerization from, for Domtar by waterway up to the port? I don't know if they have or not. I don't know if they've done the, the study for that. But do we need carbon credits for some of these alternative ways of doing things? And, and there's a, there's a ton of questions coming up. But in our mind, our board's mind, when we were considering this webinar, is it's pretty apparent at the federal level that there's going to be some infrastructure money that's going to be spent in the next year. I mean, I, I will be shocked if it is not. So what we wanted to do, as far as us selfishly, as, as the regional organization wanted to do, was to sort of push two things. One, you guys have talked about, but really kind of a more dedicated staff to I-87. If we all have a real emphasis on I-87, this group that meets with Mark and his crowd all the time. Let's, let's get real formal and get really behind things and get our political teams behind it to support that thing. And then the, the other thing that I plan on working on in the very, very short run is to try to work with our federal legislative partners to come up with some federal rural infrastructure funding. And that could be a pretty broad category. Real barge, interstate, it could be, you know, rural infrastructure can mean a lot of things. And I'm hoping to get a lot of guidance as soon as the inauguration's over, immediately try to. Immediately try to get in place some legislation that I'm hoping there's some way. Joe, nothing against you up in the Triangle, but a way that we can have some of those funds down east. There may be some, I know there's some other large projects down east that some of our legislators are working on. So all of that I have to be molded together. But one thing's for sure, if we don't ask for some money, we won't get any money. So what we want to do is partner with all of you on the call. Try to get some federal rural infrastructure money. And I don't know how we protect that word rural, but I hope to become more knowledgeable of that. And, you know, then, then, then we collectively wrap our arms around and try to support the 64 Association, the 17 Association. I live in Williamson, so I I touch both of them. Certainly important for me personally. So I think, you know, the discussion today was meant to just talk about where the North Carolina corridor is. We've certainly got to reach out and have more discussions with our Virginia partners on that side of the corridor. And we'll try to be mindful and do all of that. But that's just put a spotlight, a focus on I-87. You know, Keith Wheeler keeps talking about that we're going to have people walking around on Mars before we finish I-87. That may very well be true, but I would like to have a few tangible things continue to happen along the corridor. I don't know where on the corridor. One thing I've learned from Joe Malazo is wherever the the lowest hanging fruit is, go get it, make some improvements there, show some progress, and and let's just try to keep this thing moving. It's difficult times. It is really difficult times. In in the east, we score so terribly because we've got money to spend on the ferry system and a lot of bridges and hurricanes certainly impact us. I mean, a bunch of, bunch of things. But but I really would like us collectively to get behind supporting I-87 politically. And there may be something else we're missing. You know, the two things that really beef up the staff to support you, Mark, I think you'd be quarterly. You have paying partners along your corridor that meet with you for that. That's beef up that. I know our group wants to pledge to be, you know, a better partner with you. We'll figure out what that is. And and certainly, at least you and I, and anybody that has some real concern is welcome. But we're going to have discussions about what could some legislation look like. But what else are we missing? Or should we be doing to support this corridor? So I I guess, Trey, the best thing to do is just kind of open it up for some suggestions. I know I have been involved personally for hundreds of hours for this corridor. I notice, I know there's a lot of legislators and mayors and elected officials and county commissioners. A lot of people have spent hours and hours and hours trying to help us get where we are. Governors and DOT officials appreciate all of that. Let's just keep the momentum going. So Trey, I guess, we'll just see what kind of questions pop up. I will say, if you have to leave and you have a question, please put your question in the question box or send us a question that we'll answer later. We debated a lot about what this work session would look like and how interactive and how long it would last and all of those things. We thought it was best just to, on the first one, just to show what's the state of the of the corridor, what's being worked on, what's really out there. And and then let's make sure we don't miss this this infrastructure funding that's supposed to be an economic development stimulus from the federal government. At least we put our our hat in to try to ask for some of it. So I'll, I'll, I'll open it up to everybody. We'll all do some answering. But if you have to leave, certainly send some, send something to all of us. We're, we're interested in all of your concerns. There are some big projects that are scattered around eastern North Carolina, the Alligator River Bridge. I mean, there's, there's some, there's some large ones that are very important, not to say this is more important than the other. But if we could get some federal money that doesn't replace the money we are already getting, Dana's already warned me, don't be taking, don't just be switching money from one pot to another. Go out there and try to find some new money that can be added on top of it. And and that's, that's certainly what we'll be trying to do and exploring with our, with our federal partners. And I, I'm not going to put any of them on the spot. They have, they have all told me and give me information of their DC transportation person. We'll be in in good shape for those first discussions coming up in the next few weeks, sooner rather than later. All right, Trey?
Yeah, we've got a question, but I will reiterate for everyone. If you do have a question, just go ahead and click that chat box, tap it in there and submit it. Or you can use the little reactions button down at the bottom of your Zoom window. Click raise hand and we'll announce you and you can unmute yourself and ask your question. So Commissioner Norman, if you'd like to unmute, you can ask your question.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. First of all, I want you to know I'm very, very appreciative of being able to be in part of this meeting. I definitely want to do anything and everything I possibly can to support. I was in Washington last year, November. No, I'm sorry. Yeah, last year, November, and I was talking to one of Rep., not Representative, but Senator Tillis's aides, and we were talking about the corridor. And one We lost you.
Trey, can you see what's going on with?
You may have to unmute yourself again. You may have accidentally hit something.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Very good.
One of the questions was, I mean, well, I really had two questions, but one of the questions I had, I had real, real concern about that was when I was in Washington, I was talking to Senator Tillis, one of his aides. They were saying, they were talking about the fact that they were going to drop dark fiber along that corridor. Yeah, the infrastructure is going to be real, real important. But one of the things that I think will augment that transportation piece will be broadband. And is that still part of the conversation or has that shifted and changed?
Well, I'll start, but no, Mark and Dana have educated me on that. The the seven, Highway 70 corridor, they've certainly got some money and I I think are dropping that. So certainly internet broadband, all those things can fit very easily in federal rural infrastructure funding. So I think that may, may be an opportunity. Dana, Mark, you got a thought on any of that?
I'll just jump in and say, at this point, I don't, don't have much. I know that we have some programs that look to use construction and right of way to do that, but I don't know enough to be an informed answer on that, but I can get back to you on that, Van.
There are competitive grants that are made available through, I don't know if it's US DOT or Federal Highway Administration, but federal monies to do what you suggest, Commissioner, and and North Carolina has received grants for that purpose. And I think that's what Van was referring to. It was my understanding, once upon a time, and it's been, I guess, over a year ago, I think I was having a conversation with Jim Trogdon about it. But there was an interest in doing some of that for some of the US 17 corridor as part of the I-87 initiative. But it would require us to to receive a federal grant to get it done.
Trey, we had a comment I saw jump up of where the money came from for 70.
We've got another question, but we did have a comment on that question from Commissioner Norman. John McDonald said the broadband for US 70 and I-95 were awarded by DOT under build grants.
Got you.
So for the next question, if that answers your question, Commissioner Norman, for the next question we have, after the corridor gets improved to interstate standards, how long does it take to receive the interstate designation?
That may be a question that Joe can answer just from experience, but the, I think the, the, we're at the point where it's already designated. So, you know, that's the, that's the good position that we're in today. And Joe, you want to tell a little bit about kind of how long that took? And I don't know that it's really a standard timeframe either.
Yeah, Dana, happy to offer a couple of thoughts on it. I mean, there's really a couple of elements, and you you hit on earlier today about the designation. The quarter itself in North Carolina has been designated as I-87, so that's known, that's done. The next question would be, once it's fully up to interstate standards, and you've heard from, you know, various speakers across the four divisions on the various shoulder widens, really the corridor, if you take Williamson West, Williamson to, I guess it would be Wendell is one section. And then North Williamson on 17 is different. And the portions on 64 are, some of them are ready. Some of them are actually interstate standards now, I think. The portions in Martin County look like they're interstate today to me. I may be wrong about that, but if they're not, they they sure look close. Maybe there's some bridge ice that aren't there. But they've got, my understanding from prior conversations is as long as you have a continuous section, then the department's willing to make that request, and then it goes through Ashto. And 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 once that's done, they only meet twice a year for the Route Numbering Committee, but then it can happen. So it doesn't happen immediately, but I don't remember taking like more than a couple of years, I think, on the outside and sometimes faster, once the work is done. And in fact, NC DOT will apply, and again, you worked that, I don't think, but I mean, in terms of some corridors, they apply in advance because there is a new interstate for the Triangle that's going to open this year, I-885. And that road's still under construction, but they put their application in, the hope being that by the time it's open, they've met all the design standards or any exceptions that are needed, then you go. So we, as a business group, are hoping that as these improvements get in place long enough, we can do it. So I mean, a good section would be from Rocky Mount West or East would be a natural one because you're tying into 95. I don't think that, I don't believe that they can get approval for just an interstate, like right on the Windsor Bypass by itself. It would have to connect to something else. I don't think there's just, they'll, they'll do small, isolated sections of that. I could be wrong, but I believe that you'd have to tie into something else and have full interstate the whole way. So Rocky Mountain, either direction is the most obvious next spot, but hopefully some other ones soon. And the sooner we can get that pushing along 64 towards Williamson, Martin County, then we can start getting a lot more interstate designated, actual signed mile. I guess that's the difference, signing, I think, maybe what the question was versus designation. And then the sooner, and more you have that, then the more momentum that will create. I'm not sure if that helps. I hope it does.
All right, we've got a couple more questions coming in from John Chaffey. Once improvements have been made to specific segments, can future I-87 be converted to I-87 designations?
And I think I was, you remind me jumping in on this. I think it's the same thing. I think it depends to some extent where it is. But my sense of it, if it's a long enough segment and ties into a natural connector, then the answer would be likely. So again, the portions of 64 that that are east and west of Rocky Mount that are, it's a significant length. And I'm not sure how long would have to be. It may not have to be that long. I think the answer is yes. And the reason is, when you look at, we have experience already in Wake County, the portions of 440 and the portions of US 64 have been designated there. They don't have future I-87 signs. They have I-87 today on both the overhead signs and the post-mounted signs. And that's 13 miles of that now. An advantage that we have on this corridor is that once you do it, a section of it, if I understand it right, I-87 is tying back into a portion of the National Highway System anyway, which is 64 and 17. So since it's on that, it has a direct tie-in. You would wonder if you only have like a mile or two of improvement, would it be worth doing? If I recall correctly, I think RTA, we did request a few miles on 64 through Rocky Mount because our understanding was about a mile or two of that was designated, was interstate, but that was not approved. Only the slightly longer section back in Wake County was, but with any significant length, you could get it. I think that's the key. So John, I appreciate the the question, and that's my understanding of it. And Dana, you may either corroborate that or offer additional perspective from your view.
That's, that's what I've been hearing too. How about you, Dana?
Yeah, and I'll just, I'll echo the guy I ask all kinds of DOT questions are, the director of our spot office, Jason Scrontz, who put into the comment, once a section between NHS, National Highway System routes is completed to full interstate design standards, the sign can be placed. So I think that's the, the point, and I trust Jason on that. So I think we're up to speed on how that happens. Thank you for that input, Jason.
Good news.
And I think that answers Commissioner Norman's other question as well.
Trey?
Don't have any new questions right now, but as we're waiting on questions, I'll kind of reiterate what Van mentioned earlier. I will send a follow-up email sometime tonight with the recording of this meeting and all the materials, slides from NC DOT, and we'll post it on our website as well.
I, could I ask a question that this would be to the the division representatives from, might be Division Four, might be the other ones and so on. Are there any sections on this corridor that are at fut-, that are at interstate standards today that have not yet been posted? Is there a section on Rocky Mount and through Rocky Mount near 95 where the shoulders are sufficient width, where the the bridge heights are good, whatever the other elements are? Is there anything that actually has, as of now, just due to recent work or just your own knowledge, has been? And I'm, I'm just trying to think, if that's the case, based on Jason's comment there, which is very informative, is there an opportunity for a quick one right now as a result of this? Any, any of the division folks may be able to speak to some of that.
Hey Dana, this is Lynn White, Division Two. I do know that Kevin Lacy, his team out of Raleigh, they are currently and actively riding the route, the corridor and identifying what spots are ready, and they are getting a list of areas ready for signage. So that is, that is happening.
That is fantastic news, and Kevin's the one to do that. He's very good as our state highway engineer, or state traffic engineer, I should say.
And that's quick work, Lynn. Well done. Way to get, get that question addressed. We got you, Joe.
That's all. That is our response of NC DOT. That's what partnership is about.
We'll take it. We'll take the W.
So is there anything else?
I have a question.
Okay.
You know, the the four-lane 70 mile an hour area through Chawan looks to be, you know, pretty good. But what's it lacking to assign it, you know, what's it lacking technically to assign it as I-87?
Um, I could speak a little bit to that, and I know Craig was on the call, but it is being reviewed by Kevin's office right now. So I think that would come out and let us know exactly what, what it would be missing.
Kristen, can I ask you a question, if you don't mind me, just directly on that? Is there a minimum length? Like, for example, if there's only like a quarter, a quarter miler would be any place to put a sign. Do you know, is there any sense of what an absolute minimum length where the department would consider signing?
I, I am not 100% sure on that, but I'm assuming, you know, to go through the work and the effort it would take to present it to the committee and to Ashto, I believe, you know, they would want it to be a decent amount, I'm sure.
Sure.
I can, we can get some specifics on that, though.
If, if you'd like, I just try to see if you knew, if you or other colleagues at the department knew off the top of your head because that feels like it, now that we know that Kevin and his team is riding the corridor, and it looks like Van and the momentum you're looking for is about to happen in some places, just to get a sense of expectations, what we can see.
Yeah, and we've actively engaged Kevin, just leading up to not just this presentation, but he's pretty active in these conversations. So that's a resource we can always bring back in. And I love that Van calls this a working group because I think, or a work session, because I really think that does get down to some of the nitty gritty.
I would defer to my DOT friends on this, but just generally speaking, to improve even a four lane expressway kind of facility to interstate requires wider shoulders, wider medians, certain height of bridges, no at-grade interchanges whatsoever. Length of ingress and egress ramps, other safety considerations, crash barriers and so forth. So all those things have to be in place before you can be considered an interstate quality facility.
That's right. And, and another piece that just takes time and understanding in which this group can also help us with as, as we move forward and projects do become funded and get closer to construction. The right-of-way purchase, purchases involved in it as well, or something that we just need to make sure, to communicate with the locals of, you know, what the goal is of the corridor. So that when we come around to, you know, proceed in right-of-way purchases, they have an understanding of the project. Because that too takes time to, you know, if you're going to purchase someone's land, to give them a good understanding of, of what we're going to do with the land that's purchased.
Another question from John. He asked, has an analysis been done along the corridor to identify where critical bottlenecks exist?
So we did some similar research during the Eastern North Carolina Freight Mobility Study, and that's a, a study that we can also make available in Trey's email. And we are actually doing ongoing freight congestion analysis on the parts of the highway in Eastern North Carolina that are predominantly freight routes. And there's a lot of them, so, which is, which is a great thing, an active economy there. So specifically, John, I can get that report to you and it kind of identifies some of the key issues. It also identifies some of the safety issues, the, the different land use concerns in that, in that quarter. That study is really great that it, that we wrapped it up before Van got going and I think gives us a great starting point for discussion.
And feasibility studies exist for both the US sixty-four section and the US seventeen section of I eighty-seven, which look at alternatives for particular sections of the facility and, and kind of pegs a cost as best can be estimated. So those are useful documents that I'm confident exist on the DOT website. Somebody posed the question about what happens between Williamson and Windsor. I think that was addressed in the feasibility study for the US seventeen part. That's not an easy answer, obviously, because you, you're going through wildlife refuge. It's going to require environmental mitigation. It's going to require more expensive facilities, bridging and so forth. So that's obviously a challenge, but those things are addressed in the feasibility study.
Kristen just posted the study for US sixty-four in the chat. Thank you.
You know, I think one of the, the challenges we have, and I hope we have this problem, is if there is some money that's available, what we ask to spend it on. There are, there are several things that are relatively low hanging fruit that we'll have the future discussions on. I think right now, if we could just, I, I mean, I know if you get, if you look at the participants and you see, you know, Senator Burr and Tillis and Butterfield. I mean, we've had, we've had some good representation at the federal level. Thank you for that. We also got some of our North Carolina legislators on. We've, we've just got to figure out what to, what to do with this. But it's exciting that we're, we're all having this conversation again. I really feel kind of embarrassed, Mark, that we kind of didn't pay attention to what you were trying to do on the corridor for the last couple of years. But we're back. We're advocates now, so.
Trey?
One question from Matt Peeler for the DOT folks. Do you guys have a link to the Atkins twenty thirteen US seventeen Economic Impact Study?
Mark does.
Yes, we can make that available to you. I would say that as good as that study was at the time, it's woefully out of date now. So one of the things that we might want to look at is how we conduct, would be a current economic impact study for the I eighty-seven corridor. Because I'm confident that the economic impact will be far greater now than even it was in twenty thirteen. And it makes the, the work that we're going to do all, all the more important. So that may be one thing we should think about.
Was that an NC DOT feasibility study, Mark? In thirteen?
It was a private study that was conducted by Atkins on behalf of the Highway Seventeen Association. And it really wasn't, it, it didn't incorporate the US sixty-four piece. It was just the US seventeen corridor. It was paid for primarily through a federal SPR grant, State Planning and Research Grant. And DOT provided the state match on behalf of our organization in order to make it happen. So it was primarily federally funded with a DOT match.
So methodology was sound, we just need, it would just need to update, you know, get it up to twenty twenty-one.
Correct. Trey, I think you were going to put up our contact information at some point, because I had, I think Elwood had asked about my current email.
Yes, I'll go ahead and throw that up there. And if anyone else has any more questions, we still have some time left. One comment from Matt Peeler. He says, this fear is that we will lose businesses with this as they bypass Northeastern North Carolina at speed and head to either Virginia or Raleigh straight through.
I think we all collectively got to figure out how to do even better messaging of the cool stuff we've got in our region to, to pull those people off. It's also easier for those people to get to our region as well. If you've got some cool stuff happening in your community and stuff that we all regionally can advocate what's here to do. I mean, we hear quite often companies trying to recruit senior talent into their business and they can't get them to stay in Eastern North Carolina. They don't think there's enough to do. There is a lot to do. We just got to help with some of that messaging. Lot of the different communities doing an awesome job with that already. We just got to step it up for, for that interstate when we get in there.
They and I agree with what you said. If you don't mind me adding something to it, from the corridor, from Williamson all the way back to Raleigh, it's already a freeway. So the bypass is already in place. People are already bypassing those communities. The question only is, can you get the marketing? Can you get the benefits that that interstate designation is going to provide to attract people to those communities to use that? From, from the Raleigh city limits to Williamson, it is seventy the whole way, other than a very small piece to Rocky Mount where it drops down to sixty-five and that's it. So the people are already being bypassed, if you will, but it's a safer road, it's a more attractive road and it gets people there. What we're missing is that marketing connection and then extending that further to the folks further up in the Albuma to get in the, on seventeen highway.
And I apologize as well, we, we're having a one-side conversation here and haven't included our Hampton Roads partners as much as we should have on this, on this meeting. It's, this corridor is a lot to wrap your head around and, and to cover. So we have selected the North Carolina portion of this, but it's a bigger conversation with that. And I'm sure if we had any of our partner entities up there, they would talk about the importance of the corridor coming out of the congestion of Hampton Roads down our way and what that all can mean. We'll make sure we, we do a better job of having our Virginia partners more involved on some of our future discussions.
Something, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, hello. I feel this technology is great here. I'm just figuring it out as we're, as we're moving along here how to utilize it. But I, I think, I haven't heard anything mentioned yet about the foreign trades, foreign trade zone status that we have now with the folks in the port of, of Virginia. And a lot of questions that I get when it comes to which section is going to be developed first, you know, in terms of this I eighty-seven. I haven't heard a lot of conversation today about that aspect of it. And the fact that it seems as though this would be prime for expansion first because of the problems that they have. Well, I don't know if they're problems or not, but the lack of availability of land close to the port in Virginia that is available and affordable. And all of that land that is in North Carolina, just across an invisible border that is available for companies, export, import, assembly, whatever the case might be. It would seem as though if you were trying to boost the economy of the entire state, that we need to take another look at what needs to be done first. You know, they just had that new bridge constructed, the Dominion Boulevard Bridge up there in Virginia. And that's really a, a straight shot now right into the port from, from Northeastern North Carolina and those counties that would be part of, and are in fact, part of this foreign trade zone. I, I, you know, it hasn't been discussed. I think, you know, you want real growth, real quick. That would be, in my view, that would be the way to, to go about it. So I'm just, and I know a little something about that foreign trade zone bill because it was my bill. And we were very excited about it at the time. I remember, you know, you've got to get these things through, no matter, no matter how you get them through. And I can recall when we did this, I thought it was just going to be a standalone bill and, you know, all this notoriety. And they attached it to a damn pig bill. But the fact of the matter is it's in there, it's legal, it's, it's for us to utilize. And, and I, I just think that all of my counties that I represent believe that that should in and of itself be a reason for strong consideration here.
Senator, I just wanted to thank you for even participating on today's call. You, you are a champion on a lot of our, our issues that we have up here. You'll roll up your sleeves and you help, help us with those. I know you're working on some other transportation issues across the region as well, but you're exactly right. Foreign trade zones a big deal if, and, and we can, we can emphasize, we'll, we'll, we'll try to put everything in the hopper to try to make sure that we can get some funding that we can spend up here. So I think every point that you come up with is, is certainly a valid point. I think the military base in Elizabeth City is a, is a huge point. There are, there are several things that I assume is important, but I'm hoping our federal legislative crowd can give us some guidance on what helps us score, score better.
And Van, I would like to say this, that for guys like you and I that have a little age on us, this, 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 this camera thing is not very flattering, I can tell you that. We look like a bunch of gosh darn old geezers, double chins, triple chins. I mean, it's awful.
But we're smiling, we're happy.
And we're smiling, right, exactly.
Keith?
Just to follow up on, on the Senator's, a great example there. Frank Heath gave us a heads up last time we met. When was it Frank? A year ago to, to talk about the freight study. But the East Coast Metal Fabrication Barge Company that decided when they looked at where their workers were from and the cost of living, cost of doing business, et cetera, moved their entire company from Chesapeake down to, to Hartford, in Prequemans County. And, you know, that, if we're going to talk marketing, you know, that would be a really good example to put a gold star on and find out, you know, if they're willing to talk and share, you know, what the number said, what, what, you know, what was the true draw. Certainly it was workforce and where they're commuting from, but, but if there are other, you know, nuggets of information that can be pulled out from them, that would be a wonderful story to, to latch on to the corridor.
I can stake us in Prequemans. I can assure you they're willing to do that. I've heard them talk about it. We're going to need those stories to help with our messaging and to keep some positive stuff going on along the corridor. That's, that's something we've just got to do a good job of keeping everybody together on their thinking and messaging externally and showing the importance.
And Van, one of the things to think about in the whole region is just the, the dynamism of the supply chain. And as we start to see sectors like wind power, offshore wind power develop, you know, that's going to be a major draw to Northeastern North Carolina. And the supply chain that not just the wind farms onshore and offshore, but really the full industry that, that backs that, you know, that endpoint. And this is something that you see aligned with Governor's Executive Order eighty and a lot of effort in the state to start to address wind power as an opportunity. So I think that the supply chain in the region, not just for wind power, but is one area to start to, to really pin, what are we planning on? And what does it enable? You know, economic growth, economic mobility.
And that, that wind power report from Commerce is, I'm told, on the final legs of being released.
And then we, as a region, want to do something with it once it's released. So we will circle back and do something either with them or on our own concerning that, because that's huge for us. And I know Dave Goss about every other week of calling, saying, when are we going to do something on wind power? So he, he lives and breathes the wind power for, for the region. Right Dave?
Yeah, my concern is, is that I've been trying to get involved with the North Carolina study. I'm not even sure they're looking at Northeastern North Carolina. Maybe they have, but they haven't certainly contacted us. I've been trying to get their attention.
Hey, hey Van, this is Joe Hines with Timmons Group. Um, I, I'm on that study team and we are in the process of wrapping up that final report for, for Dr. John Harden to review. So, you know, there'll be more details to come, but as I've mentioned to you in the past, we'll certainly be glad to help bring the project team together to talk about the opportunities. And I think we're starting to see some of those opportunities come together in Virginia right now as well too, because they, they are really hitting the accelerator on pursuing that market. And that should only be beneficial to North Carolina with the memorandum of agreement that North Carolina, Virginia and Maryland have signed recently. So we're, we're almost there. It's a little bit rough through the holidays trying to get it finalized before the end of the year, but I think we're pretty close.
Joe, you're a critical partner because you played such an important role up in Virginia. I mean, you know, really a lot about the Virginia side and then what, how you played with us on trying to position North Carolina for that. You're for sure on the A-team as far as, when it, when it starts coming to wind power. So don't go away, we all are going to need you.
No, no worries. I mean, I think it's, I'm, I'm very passionate about both Virginia and North Carolina, on being a Virginia native and having gone to school and lived in North Carolina for a number of years. But I really think this is a great opportunity for the two states to work together. And I think that's coming to fruition. We've been trying to get those wheels in motion for a long time. And I think we finally have pushed the rock up all the way to the top of the hill. So hopefully it'll start rolling down pretty soon and momentum will build upon itself.
That's awesome. I, I saw earlier that Rex Rayford was with us. I know he's really involved with that project as, wind power as well. So we've got a lot of partners on this call that we can really. that project as wind power as well. So we've got a lot of partners on this call that we can really do something with. Trey signaling me that it's one o'clock and that we need to be winding this down. If you've got any other questions, send them to us. Trey's going to send you a bunch of information and this recorded session. I will put in a plug and just tell you that Mark Finlayson, the Highway Seventeen Sixty-four Association is meeting January twenty-seven. That's for a lot of his his paying partners. But if you've got questions or want to get involved or have any thoughts about that, contact Mark directly. You see his number. And we are having in February, the N C East group is having a cybersecurity industry four oh webinar. We just realized we got a conflict with some of the presenters, so we will firm up what day in February that is next week and send out a Zoom invite on that one. And and all of all of you federal legislative staff, I'm going to send you a Christmas card real soon and say, let's get together for some eggnog and go ahead and work on some legislation because we need legislation now, the first of twenty twenty-one, not not the way the Rogersons usually do, and it'd be twenty twenty-nine or something like that. So we'll circle back. And Senator, I I know you've probably got some thoughts on important stuff. There's a lot of you on this call. We'd like to stay in touch with and hear from. And and Mark does it on a routine basis. So Mark, call on us if we can help you anymore. Anything else for the good of the cause? Well, I think we we thank you. And we'll go from there. And Larry, I saw your comment as well. We'll circle back with you in Currituck County as well. Okay? Thank you, everyone. Have a good day.
Thank you all. Thank you, Van.